All right, everyone. Welcome to the January 15th meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. Bobby, would you please lead us in pledge?
Please, John. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to welcome our new supervisor, Jeremy Brown.
Thank you.
And there seemed to be a little confusion why you weren't seated at the last meeting, and it is the second meeting, so counsel, could you explain to the audience why that was?
Sure, happy to do so. The statute requires that officials take their seats the first Monday following the January 1st of the year. So typically, that would be the first meeting, but the way the first Monday and following January 1st fell this year, it turned out it was actually the second meeting. So it wasn't a choice that county had, we have to do it by statute, so we followed that for the seating, and we welcome Supervisor Brown today.
Thank you. You know, we probably needed that right now. Okay, so I am going to move 1.1 above public comment at this time. This is continued from last meeting. And what I've done after last meeting is gone thoroughly through our governance manual, and which I will read a preface, part of the preface in this, that the objective of this manual is to provide members of the county board of supervisors with a handy summary and a reference to the general manner in which the county and the board of supervisors does now and should continue to operate. In addition, this manual sets forth a code of conduct and ethical standards applicable to members of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. So within this code of conduct and our governance manual, we have clear set-out guidelines of how we do the chair and the pro tem or vice chair. So I will read the pro tem slash vice chair section of this. The chair pro tem shall be selected by rotation. If for any reason, a supervisor is unable to serve when he, when it, excuse me, is his or her turn, the supervisor shall be skipped and the office shall fall on the supervisor next in order. The pro tem shall be seated at the first regular meeting of each calendar year and shall hold the office for one year. It goes on to another qualifications. In this, we don't talk about the chair or the board, these are just automatic things that the board of supervisors has already approved. It was first approved in 2013, I believe two of the members on the board were in on that vote, and then the last amendment was in 2017, where four board members voted for that. So with that, I would ask the next in rotation, who is Supervisor Chadwick from District 3, if she is willing to be vice chair of pro tem.
I would accept a nomination.
The, in this procedure, we, there is no nomination process. In our county governance, it's just an automatic, and so it's yours to say yes or no to.
Yes.
All right. Now on to chair. The chair is, at the first regular meeting of each calendar year, the supervisor who served as pro tem during the preceding calendar year shall be seated as chair. For any reason, the pro tem, the chair of pro tem is unable to be chair, then the supervisor who is next in order to be pro tem during the preceding year shall be chair. Again, these are automatics, it says shall be seated as chair. Supervisor Morris, you are vice chair, or you wish to be chair?
Yes, I will accept that.
Okay. I hope that enacting this makes these things move cleaner and straighter. I believe this is a fair way that the board has previously decided is a fair way to ease this issue. Yes, Supervisor Chadwick?
I also read the manual, and I also reviewed previous years, and there has been a nomination and an acceptance on page 10 of M. Tell you to follow the rules, tell you to follow these rules shall not invalidate or otherwise affect any action or decision of the board. And as we have seen, rules seem to be applied differently at different occasions, so I'm glad if we're going to adopt and follow rules, but I would suggest that we be consistent.
Can you repeat the last?
If we are going to follow rules, I would ask and request that we be consistent.
I have no issue with that. It's been a long time, and I apologize to the board and the rest of the meeting that I had not thoroughly read this before the last meeting. It is my responsibility to make sure these things are done right, the chair's responsibility. And with that, any other comments?
Yep. Even with you on the board, we have not followed this. We have, I'm not quite sure why you're enforcing this this time.
My understanding, there was only one time that it was not enforced. I was not chair, and I'm not privy of the discussions of the person that missed a rotation and requested not to be on it, or not. So I have no knowledge of why he was skipped.
I would further add that there was a time where one supervisor wanted me to continue as chair since we did not have a CIO, and I denied it because it was interfering with this rotation process. So I believe it was Supervisor Fisher that was following me, and he would have became chair, I'll say, 2016, so...
And Supervisor Burton made that request.
Correct.
So the other reason to enforce it is we do have rules that we have decided in past life to live by, and we should follow them rules. If you got lied down, we should do something. So...
So is that an opening to something different?
If that's not agendized, in the future, that's fine.
So it's not an agenda item?
To change the governance manual?
Yeah.
Any other comment?
I have a question, Mayor.
Sure.
Can you explain the rules of a vote of no confidence?
Technically, no, I can't explain those rules to you, because that's political decision, and I don't advise on political decisions and just apply on the law. There is good literature out there related to a vote of no confidence, in terms of, you know, it's just a decision you make as a political statement.
I can't hear you.
It's a decision you make as a political statement, so again, I, as counsel for the county, I can't advise individual board members on what that means, but I would recommend that there's some good literature and there's some good resources out there available to learn about what a vote of no confidence is.
With that, I'll hand the chair over to...
Just a moment, point of order here. You're on item 1.1, correct?
Yep.
So you are requesting that you do not follow that item 1.1 and accept nominations and elected chairman and vice chair for this calendar year.
Stating that that is not a valid notion, or not a valid request, and should not have been put on in that manner.
So you're requesting that be withdrawn?
Yes. Thank you.
Point of order, would this require a public notice and a change in the agenda?
No.
And why not?
Counsel.
Because an item can be withdrawn at any time by the chair, and that's part of our policies, and always been enacted that way, and has been utilized many times by the county when an item is improperly put on the agenda or an item is not ready to be discussed. It needs more information. Needs more information.
Comment, you're very disappointed in the manipulation, Keith.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Where do we begin? I think it's important, having walked into the current situation from my perspective, trying to represent the constituents of District 4, I understand and have heard people's worries about following the normal procedural nomination and election of the chair and vice chair. And I would like to ask the constituents of District 4 to give me the opportunity to make my own judgment also on the leadership of the board, as I haven't known anyone here for more than, on off for six months, and have had limited time to actually get to know people, or who they are, and I would feel uncomfortable subjecting myself to a lot of information I've received or heard, or conversations I've had with people, and give everybody the fair chance of having an opportunity to earn their trust with me and hopefully show the quality of leadership that, in my opinion, should be displayed on the board. So just take that into consideration, that I have heard the worries of constituents for District 4 and other districts, but I do feel that it is, in my opinion, only fair to allow me to also have the chance to witness leadership skills or lack of with my own eyes. Thank you.
John?
Supervisor Brown, you have to also, I hope you realize that this opportunity to vote on this or make your voice heard has not been taken away.
Oh.
And if you're happy with that, I'm, move forward.
I will point out that you voted for that in 2013.
Yes.
That I never have, so... All right. Other comments? Bobby, you look like you're wanting to say something. Okay? With that, I will...
Thank you for that, though. I appreciate that.
With that, I would pass the gavel off to Chairman Morris.
Before we take, we want to try to... You can stay there. I just do need your gavel. We will go back to, before I make, open up to public comment, I would like to meet with, of course, both separately, Supervisor Chadwick as my incoming vice chair, and Supervisor Finley for your concerns offline, since you had an approach from prior, so I'm happy to meet with you and see what we can figure out what's going on. And of course, vice chair, we have a lot of work to do.
Yes.
And so I look forward to it. All right, public comments. This time is for information from the public, matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on subsequent board agenda. All right, public comment, anyone?
Good morning, I'm Jim Maury. I'm trustee for District 2, Unified School District here at Trinity, as a downriver folks, Burn Ranch Junction City. Welcome to Mr. Brown, before doing what you have to do. I'm up here just for one reason, just quick and simple. I want to recognize Patrick Mead. I'm a retired Coast Guard. Patrick has been in our veterans' office, helping veterans around the county for several years. I wish him just fair seas and a good life ahead of you, my friend. It's been a pleasure to know you, I hope to see you around town, and from one venture to another, nice to meet you.
My name is Veronica Caliabyz with Douglas City, and I was compelled to reach out to you and attend today, because I'm currently in a fight to save my home and my neighborhood. And my family has been dealing with a lack of communication and transparency with the planning department, we feel, over the last several months. There are many hardworking people within the department, just a lot of work, and however timely notices and public records requests have been, the timing on that has been unacceptable in getting it to the public as required. And I've attended board supervisor meetings, and you've asked the planning director for specific things, and they're not able to bring it to you, so I'm not sure how you can make informed decisions, and I just don't see anybody being held accountable to you or to the public for getting the things that we need in order to fight for our lives sometimes, our livelihoods. And so I wanted to bring that out, and there are far too many dark areas within the process that seem to screen private politics and shielding public information from the public. Transparency is key to good community involvement. If we believe in it, we'll be there. Our county has many difficult decisions and public processes coming in the next few years that can either go down a dark path with division and mistrust, or down a more well-lit path of communication, transparency, better political work for the whole instead of the one. And all of this needs strong leadership. And leadership that lives in the light and believes all of the public, as well as their constituents, should be heard and considered. So I wish you all well with this process, we know it's difficult, but walk in the light. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and Board. Welcome Supervisor Brown. A couple things, I guess I'm kind of disappointed that we have a process that was working last few years, and again, this year, and once it was obvious or apparent that possibly it wasn't going to turn out the way it was supposed to, it's upended again, and public comment was even withdrawn again, and we weren't even able to comment on the election or the nomination process, or whatever you want to call it now, for Supervisor Chair. So it's just, I guess, part of the normal routine. I'd love to see an agendized item next time to incorporate what happens when you miss a rotation for chair, because it seems like Down Rivers District got missed somehow in the mix, and it hasn't been fully accounted for, and we've reordered things. The other item I'd like to mention is the fact that the cannabis program has never had a fee study done. We've never seen an expenditure list either. And unfortunately, members of our community have taken it upon themselves to sue the county over the ordinance, and the actual license holders do. And, I mean, I think that a lot of people have grievances regarding the ordinance, and it sucks up all the oxygen in the room, of course, but, I mean, I've got problems with it, too. But we haven't sued, nobody else has. TA decided to go ahead and sue. And unfortunately, to make, to be able to actually defend the county, I think the program's going to need more money, or at least need to know where the money's going. Because we just don't know. And I know that in an impoverished county like Trinity, the cookie jar that the cannabis program funds looks enticing. I'm sure that there are entities within this government that have their hand in that jar right now. But we need that money probably to hire an attorney, defend a lawsuit. There will be a lawsuit, obviously, against the EIR when it's done. And we haven't been fully accounted for the EIR in the contract with the center. Let me set up for a mitigated negative declaration. The EIR is going to cost more. We haven't accounted for that. There's something unaccounted for, and money is clearly being sent out of the county, out of the planning department, and to other government entities, and we're not seeing that money come back. So if the ordinance is going to be used for abatement, then I think that that money, the fines from the abatement should go back in the cannabis program, or at least a remediation fund or something, to ensure that those sites are properly taken care of. Because right now, SEQA's looking at trying to separate illegal cultivation from licensed cultivation, but man, they're tied together intricately in the ordinance, and the funds are being used from the licensed program for both issues. Either they're both part of SEQA, or they need to be separated. Something needs to happen. I'd love to see an agenda item on that. Thank you.
I think there was a request for an agenda item. Thanks, Keith. I'm not quite sure what the agenda item is, Judy.
Can you read yourself, John, please?
Request for an agenda item.
Yeah.
At first, it didn't seem something like that it would be an agenda item, but is it something, is the cost related? I have information on the cost related to what the cannabis committee has spent over the past two years, or what it's caused us to put this together.
Well, it's in the budget, obviously.
Right.
It was passed in September. I think Director Tippett pointed that out the other day on something related, so there's a lot of concerns, obviously. We've asked for a fee study.
Fee study, but the requests of how the, I guess I just quite didn't understand his request for an agenda item, and I think that should be taken a look at, if you wouldn't mind.
Yep, and then I'll get with counsel to see if there is some concern on this lawsuit, what she can speak to.
Yeah, that's not part of this. Thanks.
Hey, Groves and Lewiston. So in discussions with a reporter from Sacramento Bee, they described other county behaviors as operating in the Trinity County way, and I'd just like to say kudos for starting it off with the Trinity County way. I hope you guys have a good time. Thanks.
Morning, Madam Chair, morning, Tom Palaico, Douglas City. Welcome to the chair, sir. Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair, welcome. I like the way that sounds.
Yeah.
Welcome Supervisor Brown. Unlike others, I think the board accurately reflects Trinity County. This is a rather diverse 14,000 or 15,000 people who live here. And on that note, I know with the chair are certain considerations about ad hoc committees, and speaking on the subject of the cannabis ad hoc committee, whatever becomes of that ad hoc committee, I do want to commend the work you guys have done balancing the contrast in this county. There are people in the very fiber of their soul cannot stand cannabis, believe it makes them sick, maybe it does, but then there are those with young families entirely dependent on the cannabis industry. And you have, over the last several years, chartered a course that listens to all sides in this debate. Doesn't mean any side is pleased with it, obviously. Maybe no side's pleased with it, which is often the way I evaluate any compromise. So I can understand being a little upset. I probably more than a lot of people understand some of the spending you've done to accommodate the needs of the non-growing community, our carve-outs, our limitation on licenses, our setbacks, our school bus setbacks. All these things were concessions to people who voiced their concerns about cannabis. We could have just said, hey, we're not doing anything, we're going under state law, and none of those things would be here. Those protections were crafted by the ad hoc committee for people who are anti-cannabis. Now you're getting sued for it. Or should I say, now we're getting sued for it, which doesn't bother me. I mean, I literally truly love this stuff. This is fun, I look forward to being shoulder to shoulder with the county on this side. Gives me something to do, I'm excited. It's unfortunate, though, that we had built a program that had a tidy sum set aside, a large portion of which could go to enforcement. We finally had a sheriff in place who would be vigorous and enforcement, had a budget in place, and now, thank you, TAA, that budget has to go to defending this lawsuit. So talk about cutting off the nose to spite your face. I do encourage us to continue on this path. It is a bumpy road, but I think we're making progress, so I look forward to what, 2019 is.
Hello, guys. General Minister Frank, welcome, guys. Thank you, welcome to Mr. Brown. I want to applaud you for all the work you've done. You guys have had an impossible task in front of you. I must tell you, as a former resident of the Pines, I saw the cannabis at the worst. We went through the guerrilla growers who came and just took over the place, cleared their land, pushed the berms of brush up against their property lines, creating fire hazards everywhere. Then the monks came, at least they got permits from Cowfire, but they took down the trees, pulled out the roots, and even got rid of the bushes. Talk about an ecological disaster waiting to happen. We got out of there in the nick of time. I never planned on being a cannabis farmer, but when it started following me down to where I moved to, down by Hayfork, and it was going to be a legitimate business, I decided, let's, if you can't beat 'em, join 'em, let's show 'em the right way to do it. I've done everything. This book, anybody that says we're not ecologically conscious needs to be educated. Anybody up here afraid of us making ecological damage is ignorant. They don't know, the hoops we jumped through, fishing wildlife, water boards, everybody's been at my place. They were so impressed with our practices, that we use, they gave us an exemption from the SEQA. Regulation is saving the creek. When I moved from the Pines, the very first year we lived down there, the creek dried up. It was our main source of water. We had to put in a well. This is before we even considered cannabis being our industry. The next year, we had a fairly good winter that year, the creek stayed a little high, but it was still low and nasty, algae plumes everywhere, you couldn't dare go in that water. The year after that, regulations started kicking in, the water, even though we didn't have a high, any rain really that year, still flowed. I know, because we were panting for gold, we had gotten to a good spot, and the water never went low enough for us to get to it again. It has never ran that low again since. This year, in the middle of summer, even with no rain, the creek actually rose. The reason why, people aren't pumping out of the creeks no more. They're buying water and adding it to the water table. Our industry, being clean growers, is helping. We are doing the good stuff. Everybody against the legal aspect of this is fighting, is killing their own self. All they're going to have left is the non-compliant growers. They're not going to have the people that want to do it the right way. So if you guys want to have it the way it was, no water in the creek, pollution everywhere, guerrilla grows going on, sue these guys and win, but I don't think you've got a chance. My lawyer's ready for you now.
Anyone else?
Good morning, guys. I'm the superintendent attorney out of Unified, and I look forward to working with you guys over the next few years to help us educate our students as best as possible. So we're looking into grant opportunities and different situations, so I plan on coming to meetings and talking to you about educating the youth of this county. I'm working with Mountain Valley, I'm working with Burn Ranch. We're all working together right now, so we're in a good place in education in Trinity County, where the administrators are all meeting, we're all talking, and I think your wisdom could help us get to a point to where we could help our students. So I just wanted to thank everyone here for... So I just wanted to thank everyone here for your service, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Hi, my name's Patrick Kahn from Downriver Sawyer area. I want to welcome Jeremy Brown. Excited to see you up here. I think you're going to be a great new addition, and I'd like to congratulate Judy and Bobby. Chairwoman does sound good. I look forward to seeing what he can do. I wanted to get up because, you know, I took the long drive through the rain. This isn't exactly why I came. I thought there was going to be more discussion about the process. That's kind of why I come, is because I learned a lot about the process by being here in person. But I felt, I still feel inclined to talk. So here it goes. It's clear, it's clear cut that cannabis is still under attack in Trinity County. And that's unfortunate to me because I represent a revenue stream to this county. And I don't hear that very often. I mean, sure, we hear about it because there's a lot of money in cannabis. And a lot of people want to figure out a way how to get a piece of that money. And I don't blame anyone for that. That's business. But what I do, what I am disappointed in is that the county doesn't seem to understand that. When I got into this county governance through subdivision and other sorts, all I used to hear was, there's no money. We can't hear you, there's no money. We can't do anything for you, there's no money. It seemed like an objective of the county to avoid money so it couldn't operate to the capacity that it should and can in California, one of the largest economies in the world. And in cannabis, one of the largest funding revenues possible in this state. And the money's starting to flow. I don't know any numbers from Trinity County, so I made up some on my own. You know, I figured there's over 350 licensed operators at $7,000 a year. That's over $2 million. That's well over $2 million. So I'm here to stand up and say, I represent that revenue stream. And my question is still, how are you, Judy, since you're now the chairperson? How are you going to agendize that? How are you going to make it, make it a priority to recognize the revenue stream that we bring and the difficult times to come when I am being sued by TAA as the John Doe, I guess? So hopefully, you know, so the pressure's a little bit off. But it's not as a business owner. It's not when standing up here as somebody who wants everyone to be successful. But I represent a group of people who are, who I feel are still marginalized and have the ability to bring a lot of good to this community. And I've seen that good because I see cannabis cleaning up this board right here, politically speaking. I see things coming to the surface that otherwise haven't come to the surface in a very long time. And I hope that you guys can continue down that path and agendize how you're going to help us navigate being sued. You know, so thank you.
Good morning. Adrian Keyes from Hayfork. First off, I'd like to welcome the new leadership, vice and chair, and the new commissioner for Downriver. And specifically, I'd like to invite you down to Trinity County Fairgrounds. I'm a director down there. And we'd love to have more input and support from District Four. You're just over the hill, take Crawl Bottom in the summertime. It's a nice drive, and I'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Supervisors. Lisa Wright from Lewiston. I'd like to ask that you consider greater public participation, encouraging more public participation in the government process. I think that's been lacking in a variety of ways. We do have the ability to stream live, I understand. These are great, the YouTube videos, and people, I think, are starting to take a look. But the streaming is available. And I understand that that's at the board's request. That's not being made public. Please increase the public participation. And if you would also consider a later meeting time. I think it's very difficult for the average working person to make it to these meetings. And even if it was livestreamed for them to participate if they're working. So a later meeting, planning commission meets later. I'm not saying seven, maybe later in the afternoon. Take a look at the last year, perhaps, and look at the duration of your meetings and adjust it downward. It would increase public participation. Which kind of leads me into the discussion that other people have started around the cannabis industry. Public participation has been highly lacking. It's actually been prohibited through the use of an ad hoc committee that's met in secret now for going on probably two years and has not been allowed any kind of public participation unless you meet in private with the individuals of those. There's been two members, which has excluded the open meeting requirements. I think that that has been done, in my view, in an unethical way. And it's led to the situation we're in now with being sued. If you would have brought the people together, the parties that were concerned, the cannabis cultivators who actually have the knowledge, who could have guided you through the ordinance crafting process, the environmental risks that are concerned, as well as people that are concerned just from a general safety perspective, that stakeholders group that we've heard so much about. By meeting in secret with two people, with a few staff members, without having that knowledge and input, it's led us to where we are now. It's also led us to the delay of a cultivation amendment that's now been thrown about between the planning commission and back to ad hoc since October. And when it went back to ad hoc, the public process that changed that ordinance was changed back and put back. So you're absolutely going around the public input and public participation process trying to invoke your own desires within that ordinance. Totally, in my view, unethical. What happened to ethics in government? I don't care if you say, oh, it's not illegal. What about ethics in government? Start to be ethical, have some integrity, and allow for greater public participation. Because it's going to bite you again. We have one lawsuit now. I've heard numerous others that are potentially in the works. So please get some integrity, have some ethics, and move forward with greater public participation. Thank you.
I'm Daryl Davis, Junction City. Happy New Year, everybody. I hope it's new. Right now, to me, it's not feeling very new. I drove from the coast to see a nomination process this morning. And I feel like I saw a selection process. Here we have this democracy where we shun new people because they're new. Bobby's been here, he's never been president, but we keep having the same presidents who, chairman, who, really, the ad hoc is consistently the chair, too. It's very, it's strange. And I heard a talk to the town. One of my friends just got laid off from a restaurant. This is our economy speaking right now, you know? Of the little restaurants we even have. We're getting sued. We're part of this. I'm not sure how the ad hoc is going to handle this. I mean, did you see it coming? What's going on here? I'm hoping for a new year of real democracy. I was hoping to get a new chair, not the same mockery that's going on, which is what I read in comment sections about this situation. Words like mockery, it's embarrassing to be a part of this and witness this every time. I drove here to be able to talk and watch democracy. Can we just see this? Can we do this right this year? Please, help us. This is just a group of farmers trying to make a living. And Keith, you're a farmer, you know? Do you understand this? Welcome. I'm in your district, Justin. I hope to meet you.
Jeremy.
Say it again?
My name is Jeremy.
Thank you. Glad to meet you, then, yeah.
Good morning, new chairperson, Morris, and new board member, Brown. My name's Larry Winter from Heimpong. And I, too, came here to witness the election of a new board president and vice chair. Hour and a half drive. And this is like the second meeting that this was on the agenda, and then it got pulled without notice, which is disappointing. But what I also want to talk about, too, is the ad hoc committees. When does the cannabis ad hoc committee become a standing committee? When they start, ad hoc committees are for a specific purpose and for a specific time period. And when you start adding amendments and changing it, well, now it becomes forever. And so I urge that it becomes a standing committee that has to abide by the grounds act so there's openness and have public meetings. And the other ad hoc committee concerning the wilderness, what I understood was that we were going to have community meetings to discuss what was going on. And we haven't had one yet. And then, according to the newspaper, Mr. Grove's going to try to meet with Jared Huffman. And I'm just wondering when those community meetings are going to happen. Because cement foot needs to happen. It shouldn't just be particular perspectives when you go talk to Huffman. Thank you.
Good morning. John Brower from Junction City. Want to welcome the new chair and new vice chair. It is nice to hear that they're both women and bring a more balanced perspective to things. Want to also welcome Supervisor Brown from Downriver. Definitely got his work cut out for him. There's a lot of work to do by this board and county support staff. I've been involved in this local politics the last few years, mostly surrounding commercial cannabis. And from my viewpoint, the cannabis ad hoc has done an admirable job of finding balance in the community and striking compromise. And I want to echo what Tom Belanco and some others have said prior, that you really have struck a wonderful compromise. We went from being about one meeting away from being a banned county to what we see today. And I'm not aware of any other mechanism without violating Brown Act for proposing new ordinances and taking public input, both publicly, privately. And, you know, sure, we've all got some complaints, but by and large, the existing cannabis ad hoc has done a lot of heavy lifting for this community. And in my experience, when we've had issues or suggestions, they have engaged. And we don't always get what we ask for, but I think they've done a very good job of keeping this ball moving forward and hearing the concerns of the community. I think moving forward, we could look at other means of creating these ordinances and updating them. But unless there's a better choice on the table, I think this is, the current means is the only means of making this happen. And especially in light of our county running without a CIO for over two years, I commend the board and staff for doing mostly a good job. And moving forward with this group suing the county and our bravest of commercial cannabis growers that have jumped into the program, I want to see them encourage vigorous defense and continue bringing maximum benefit to our community. Thank you all.
Okay, so I'll bring it up to the board. County Council, of course, there is concern about the lawsuit from our license holders. So whatever we can discuss or not, we'll have to talk about for next couple meetings and what it really means for them, et cetera. So, and in terms of rotation of the chair and vice chair, the rotation really is numerical. So we have District One, I'm District Two, District Three, Jeremy's District Four, John's District Five. So it's a simple rotation of what has been happening in answer to some gentleman's question. In terms of the amendments to cultivation, I think a question was raised. It did go to the PC. We had reported out the status of it at each meeting. We were told that they didn't want to see it come back. And then we were told it was going back. So that has caused some delay, of course. We hope to have that brought to us soon. Any other item on that cultivation amendment that you'd like to add?
No, it's in the report.
Okay, moving on to presentation. Item 2.1, Adopt a Proclamation of Appreciation Which Recognizes Veteran Service Officer Patrick Meeger Upon His Retirement From the Trinity County Veteran Services Department No Fiscal Impact. Well, this will be a tough one. I may have to hand it over to you if I check out. Why don't you guys go right on the highlight you? Yeah, I will read it, and then, but we're going to put them in a hot seat. So I can't believe this day is here, Patrick. So I think this resolution really sums it up, what we're about to honor you with. So this is a proclamation of the board supervisors of the County of Trinity recognizing Patrick Meeger, Veteran Service Officer upon his retirement in the Trinity County Veteran Services Department. Whereas Patrick's distinguished career with Trinity County began February 23, 2012, when he was hired as Veteran Services Officer. And whereas during the years Patrick worked for Trinity County, he was able to extend outreach and provide additional part-time office hours to include Hayfork and Southern Trinity Region. And whereas Patrick wrote a monthly column in the Trinity Journal entitled Trinity County Veteran, which was devoted to military veterans' issues and information. And whereas Patrick developed a county veteran service operation plan designed to capture in one document all the important state and federal requirements for the provision of veteran services in Trinity County and continued to update it annually. And whereas Patrick provided outstanding service to veterans and their families and has been an exceptional partner to Trinity County Departments, Count, United States Department of Veterans, DVA, and other veteran organizations. And whereas Patrick has dedicated his entire life and career to public service, defending our country and serving our veterans. And whereas Patrick's tireless work ethic, sense of humor, loyalty, and dedication to the veterans of Trinity County will be sorely missed. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the board supervisors of the County of Trinity commends Patrick Meeger, Veteran Service Officer, for his years of dedicated service to the County of Trinity and does hereby wish him a happy and healthy retirement. With that, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay. Do you need to bow ha, please?
Supervisor Towes?
Aye.
Supervisor Pinland?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
All I can say is thank you for the support that I've received from my boss, Shelley, from the administrative staff, and of course, from the board of supervisors in support of our efforts to, and it's not just me, it's also the VFW Post 7705 and the VFW in Hayfork. And before they furl their colors, the Marine Corps lead as well to work on behalf of our veterans here, represent them before CalVet and the VA. It's been challenging at times, particularly dealing with the VA and CalVet, but it comes with a territory. You have, I know Shelley has received some applications for the position. You have, I know Shelley has received some applications for the position, and I suspect that everything will work out fine. Been a lot of changes over seven years, and that's reflected in the new position description that's out today. As I mentioned to you in, I guess, the October, November, from where I came in in 2012, there was a file cabinet full of paper claims. Everything's on the internet now. That's the way we do business now. The requirements for accreditation are part of the job now. It all has to happen within a year to 18 months. An exam, accreditation by the V A, background investigations nowadays, it's a lot different. I just want to say thank you and thank the community for their support also.
Board members, words?
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you again, Patrick. We will miss you, enjoy your retirement. And as I said before, got nothing but good comments from you over the years in serving our veterans, so thank you very much.
Well, I just want to recognize my Coast Guard shipmate. He and I shared a kind of side, when someone moves on, a new person comes in, it's typically new broom, clean sweep, right? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Shelley.
Yep, absolutely. Yes, thank you.
I had said in the past that this is actually very good retreat for me. I have enjoyed working with you quite a bit. I think it's important to understand that when he came, he truly did dedicate his life to the service. He, I don't know that everyone knew, he had degrees in human development with highest honors, applied behavior science. He served his veterans in many different capacities. He served the veteran foreign wars post here locally, pre-seeding his veteran service officer duties. It's been a pleasure. I'll miss you, but I'll see you around town in the neighborhood.
Yes.
Thank you. Sure more than one?
Just four.
You never know. Balancing. Thank you. We'll get this over to Shaw.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Great place to go. Okay. Moving on to county matters. upside consent calendar, our calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters that will be acted upon. The board by one will call. Motion, a member of the board's staff or public may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Board members? Supervisor Brown? Supervisor Finley?
Nope.
All right. Members of the public?
I ask that 3.1 be pulled.
Anybody else? All right. Same then, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as presented. Consent calendar with 3.1 pulled for further investigation.
Thank you.
Elsa.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Please go to board.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Tavitt?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown? Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Okay. Pulling 3.1. Approve an agreement with the California Department of Ag 18-0298, Cal Cannabis Licensing Division, for the Agricultural Department to perform cannabis cultivation license compliance inspection, revenue an amount of $45,500 to the Agricultural Department. So who's going to have staff take this item?
I recommend that we, I think where the question is first, if we can answer it, we're happy to do it. If not, we'd have to request this be continued because the members of the Ag Department are not currently available. Would you like to step forward, so to Mr. Hammond?
Are you talking to him?
Yes, I am.
Thought it was still discussion.
Well, we're trying to see what staff is here. So would you present us your question, please?
You know, my question is, and I don't think we've actually, I haven't personally met the new director of the Ag Department. I was hoping you might be here today. But irregardless, we're just looking at another revenue amount of $45,000 coming out of the cannabis fund. And again, this is without a fee study, and I would think that this is a core part of the fee study, and that this amount of money being pulled out of the program is part of the core cannabis program. But again, I'm just concerned without a fee study to know if this is, we can afford this, especially with the coming litigation from T A A. I just thought more discussion on the matter might be appropriate in light of the lawsuit. Thank you.
This actually isn't coming out of the cannabis, this is revenues coming into the cannabis program. So this is the state is paying us to perform the service for the state, so it's actually additional revenues as opposed to an expense.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Tom Belanco, Deadwood City. I think this is a positive step to develop our Ag Department. The situation we've gotten into, remind me, this is an actual case I have right now. A plumber, unlike the long line of plumbers I came from, wanted to get out ahead of this building and looked at the plans and installed the plumbing, where the walls were up, where he thought it was supposed to be. There were some changes along the way, and now plumbing's over here and the wall's over here. And questions, who pays for the ditch? We developed in the county a regulatory framework long before the state even told us what they were doing. We asked to, the county really needed it, it was important, we did that, appreciate that it happened. Now the state has finally given us a framework, having our county Ag Department funded to inspect for the state only makes sense. I would encourage us to, as we look at moving forward with our own county regulations, we're always saying, hey, let's line these up with the state. So the more we can make our regulations fall under Ag, we are here doing state inspections, nobody wants planning inflicted on them year after year. And I don't mean that personal to anything. I mean, nobody wants that on any project. And the only project we do that on is cannabis. We have to go back every year to the same calendar. Planning is supposed to be very diligent to look over things. I have no problem with us having to go through there, clear our zoning, get the permits aligned. But when we start talking renewals every year, that's under the Ag. And having our own Ag Commissioner, or I don't know who we have right now, but our own Ag Department, learning what the state requires, can inform us and hopefully move forward and streamline our process, at least as we start talking about renewals when things aren't changing. I think ultimately this will end up saving us money. Thank you.
Now, are Ag Department still public county, right? Oh, we started a little minute? Okay.
Once again, John Brower from Junction City. Our existing Ag Department was not anywhere close to the task of jumping in on this commercial cannabis thing until the last year that Angela Blanchard has stood up her department and become involved. She performed C D F A inspections countywide over the summer and did a great job of earning the trust of the growers and C D F A. Met twice with our new Ag Commissioner, Joe. I think he's a beautiful fit for this. He's not afraid of challenges, and I think he'll bring a lot of positive energy to this. He is, he's communicated, and he tends to further stand up this Ag Department, agricultural commissioner position and department to really bring benefit to our commercial cannabis growers and our timber industry alike. And I think he's a great choice. I think it's awesome we're bringing in money from outside of the county to help fund this, and I encourage approval.
Any other comments? Same then, Supervisor Brown?
I'd like to know if there is ability to negotiate on the charges on this, specifically due to our rural landscape, driving time, things like that, and make sure that the payments do pan out as being covering and bringing in additional income.
At this point, no, they offered us a fee. We accepted. However, over the next year, as we perform these duties, what we can do is a fee study and see if they align with what they're offering us at that point, maybe on a renewal, we may be able to negotiate.
Waiting to see if you'll entertain a motion.
I certainly will.
I'll make a motion to approve item 3.1 as presented.
Second.
Okay. All of David?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. So passed. All right, moving on to county matters. These items include non-treaty, oh, my apologies, I'm just trying to get this. We are going to reports and announcements. Reports from departments. Director Tippa walking up.
I was asked for numbers from the land fire. We need two back, so I asked my building, chief building official for some information, and I'll hopefully catch everything that you guys wanted to know, but I'll give it to you and some questions that I asked him. First of all, how many permits for reconstruction dwellings were issued? At this time, we have 13 permits that have been issued out of the 84 structures that were destroyed. How many have been found? Was it 13? Eight houses are now complete and occupied. What was the value of the permits? There's an estimate, it was about $2.6 to $2.8 million. Yes. I asked him for an estimate of what he thought, just gut check, what he thought was the percentage of reconstruction. He says it seems to be about 30% have rebuilt or are in the process of doing something. Now I asked him, what percentage do you think we'll see this year? He says right now they're working on four permits for 2019, and he figures a few more rolling as time goes along. I asked him, let's see. I asked him if he saw any potential issues for this year, and he just said that depending on the outcome of how things get resolved due to the fire origin, might generate some more permits if there's reimbursement that come to homeowners that maybe were underinsured. And then I, final question was, I asked him if he saw the day that we'd ever fully rebuilt. He says that he's not sure whether it'll ever recover as it was from the fire itself, but eventually, from my perspective, eventually building and construction will take over and price your asset in five to 10 years. But right now, it's going to be a while before it even comes close to what it was before. With that, I can answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much for these numbers. Just a quick thought, the board may want to entertain reviewing the, I think it was a resolution we passed October 17th to reduce some fees for those fire victims, so.
Well, it's, I, the fees that were reduced, were the fees related to temporary occupancy or, it wasn't related to the structure itself, but it was related to getting something temporary so you could get back on your feet?
I don't know if that's about to expire or anything.
It had, it had certain provisions in it that had expiration dates at particular times, and people were supposed to do things by particular times, depending on when they rebuild and things like that.
Board members, Supervisor Finley?
I would like to, at this point, request that you bring back, pretty forward, new and shiny grading ordinance that might be around for our consideration at our next meeting, the William and C A O. Is that something you're interested in?
Well, we're taking the mass grading ordinance, which was a little revision of the version that you saw. We're taking that.
Bringing that to the next agenda, next meeting.
I believe we can do that. It'd be tight.
It's up to the chair.
So Supervisor Finley, if you recall when that item was before us, at the time, we had asked for a few items to come before us from a priority standpoint. So is that the board's pleasure?
That's what I'm requesting.
To do that whole list of?
No, this is, this is something separate. Apparently, it's been reworked a little bit and can be acted on quickly.
All right. So, any other Supervisor Groves?
Well, you're going to be immediate pass chair, that panel button.
Supervisor, I'm confused. Are you asking him to bring this to the P C and to the private?
Nope.
Would you request it last time? Now, would you like this to bring back as an urgency ordinance?
Yes.
I think I have an actual point of order. Isn't it the fact that an urgency ordinance, once it fails, cannot be brought back on the same material for a year?
Concern?
That's correct. It's my understanding that we have a different item that's coming before, it won't be the exact same, but yes, that has been discussed.
We've got change.
Which given that Supervisor Finley would have to go through the normal process.
I.
It is the same ordinance that came before the board in an urgency fashion, it would have to go back to the P C in the normal process. Again, it's different. It's been different, therefore, you forward the board, that can be done through an urgency ordinance. Again, I don't know exactly what the changes are now, so we would want to review it to make sure it's correct.
Could you please provide that material to the board and email what you just read? Could you email the staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
The clerk has it in show.
Thank you. Supervisor Brown?
Is there any update or can I get clarification on the flood mitigation grant status?
The hazard mitigation grant program requires that we go out and essentially, there's a lot of legwork that needs to happen with that grant. And during the cycle, it was our first opportunity to apply for one that I'd ever dealt with. And when realizing the amount of work that we had to do, we had to kind of circle wagons, pull back and get things going. We are, our grants person has started, and we were actually talking about it yesterday. We're expecting quite a bit of money to come out in the spring, early summer timeframe. And that means we're going to actually start now working on identifying people that are going to want to participate, because we need to have them do certain things before I can apply to the state, and it's all a very, very tight timeline. So essentially, you have to kind of know what you want to do and have it all arranged, and then apply for it, and that's one that will.
Is this the one that, the deadline's on the 19th, or is it different?
No, this is, this is different. The one on the 19th, I did not get a chance to review it, but even then, we probably would not have been able to accommodate it based on things like the jail that we're trying to get out the door right now.
Do you need any assistance on collecting names or parcel numbers?
Yes, we'll come to you when, at times appropriate. Yes, we'll come to you when that time's appropriate. Thank you.
And are there questions?
Do we have any update on any cleanup possibility for the Lewiston car fire?
No, it's, as you know, some of the meetings we've sat in, it's been very frustrating because the answer gets to be no and now it's getting to be, we've already told you, it's no.
So?
So it's, it's frustrating, the geopolitical boundaries that I discuss on that.
So what, as a county, are we going to do since now? We have good rains coming, we're flushing toxics down the creek.
Well, it's, the, when a house burns, it is the homeowner's responsibility to mitigate that house back to a safe condition. I mean, that's what would happen if a single house were to burn down in the neighborhood. They would be responsible for debris removal and addressing the issue. This here is, there's nothing different. What's different in other events is we had Cal Fire come in or Cali Cycle and offer to mitigate, but the extent of damage in Trinity County on this one did not foster that assistance from the state and so therefore it remains with the homeowner to mitigate the problem.
So instead of helping, and I'm not, I understand your position, I clearly understand it, are we then going to go out there and cite the homeowner?
We try to encourage and help where we can by directing them to the right people when we can, but eventually, if they do not, usually best way to do it is to hire and employ a debris removal company or outfit to do that, but if they don't, then there's eventually a point where we would have to take enforcement action to get the work completed.
So have they been fully notified that there is nothing that the county can do?
I'll have to follow up on that. We have unofficially notified, but in writing officially, no, I have not.
Okay, that's not a phone call I'm looking for. All right, thank you.
Rick, quick, I have a quick question. We obviously have a planning commission meeting this Thursday, that's from last week's best view before, correct? Okay, thank you.
Actually, we have a, two special meetings on the 17th, which is this Thursday, we will be looking at a rezone and conditional use permit in Douglas City and then next week, we will be looking at the grading ordinance, the mass grading ordinance, I should say, again, for input as had been requested or.
Does that answer some of your questions Supervisor Finley?
Yeah, I was requested to do.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other department heads?
Good morning, Lady Garcia, Director Health and Fitness Services and OES. I just wanted just to give a brief update to the board. Last week, I attended the California Welfare Directors Association meeting and they pretty much just gave us a little review on the impact of the shutdown. As you know, the majority of our public assistance programs are state and federal funded and the program that's most impacted right now is our CalFresh program, which is also known as food stamps. The state is able to issue the temporary benefits in January because of how the federal appropriations are issued, so when it comes to the month of March, I just want to let the board know that it could be a big concern. The state will have to pick up the tenant assistance program in March if the shutdown continues. So again, it's a big concern to us as a county and to the state because it becomes a financial issue to the state of California. So, sorry, I'm getting over a cough. So just want to give you the update on that. The WEP program is also impacted, but again, benefits are still going to be issued through the month of March. So, and just to touch on Rick's report on the debris issues from fires, we have been in contact with our community action partnership and there may be some assistance there that they will be helping financially to the families affected, so we're still waiting for their response on what those, you know, things could be that they could help with, so we are still pursuing that and so we're hoping we have some good news coming to the families that were affected. Okay, so I'll be sure to keep you posted on that too.
You said that was through CAP?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. In our last disaster council meeting, it was either, I think it was you or Liz mentioned back to Palena fire that, if I remember this right, 40 plus families of people have not returned back to the area, you had to reach them outside.
That's right.
Not relocated now.
Yeah, we, as part of our recovery process, we reached out to all the families in the Holy Fire to see if, you know, how they're doing and if they needed any additional assistance and only a few responded, I want to say 13. And those families also, they had needs of debris removal, you know, cutting down trees that were burned, that also is an area that CAP can assist with also, so we're really pursuing that too. So it's Helena and the car fire victims.
Okay. Any other questions before we? Thank you, Lady. Any other department heads?
Good morning, Charles, Director. Just wanted to repeat that we are running a open recruitment for veteran service officers and human resources. We are currently working on tax documents for your healthcare, so we'll be sending those out to all of our employees shortly. And in risk management, we have been renewing a lot of insurance programs for the 1920 year. Those have been done timely and conducting safety inspections over the past several months in all of our departments.
Thank you, Charles. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Any other department heads? All right, CNN, the well-arrested county administrative officer.
I joined your communication, though I missed the report.
Hey, wait a minute. That's not Margaret. We'll come back to Margaret. How are you, Sophie? Anything you'd like to contribute?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay. Report from ADHOC, the Cal, who am I skipping?
No other.
Sorry, board members.
Come on, Bobby, jump in there and point.
Vice Chair Chadwick, anything to report?
Sure, so on the 7th, I went to the fire chiefs meeting and Steve Redden shared that there is a wireless service for mobile broadband, so I just want to point out that hopefully, this is broadband that is specifically set aside for first responders, so it's just coming into the view, but hopefully it will be a benefit for Trinity County. On the 10th, NorCal EMS, there's some, NorCal EMS is a conglomerate of several of the counties and there's a new county, Lake, is looking at joining us, so there was a lot of discussion over that. The most important thing I took away from the meeting was that there are three new pain relievers that are approved and ready to go and be used immediately in our ambulances. All of them are non-opioid. One is specifically for children, it's a nasal inhalant, so we are part of NorCal EMS with the other communities and counties around us, so this is a benefit for those that are responding, especially with the children. Also on the 10th, there are Trinity County Affordable Housing Committee. This is a new committee. I just gave the information to Tina, I don't think had maybe three meetings, so it'll be coming before you, Chair, at a subsequent meeting to be on the list, as well as the opioid, Trinity County Opioid Committee. That too will, in a subsequent list, be presented to the board. I did have the opportunity to meet and greet with Sheriff Tim Saxon, really appreciated the time that he set aside and I encourage everybody to participate and get to know our new sheriff and hopefully even tour the jail. On the 14th, there was a community infrastructure meeting just getting started and look forward to sharing really, hopefully, good things coming out of that meeting, so that's it now, Chair.
Supervisor Brown?
No, I don't have any trouble.
Supervisor Finley?
Just an update with PSA2. It is federal funding. We are on top of revenue coming in from the Feds. Director Gabriel, PSA2 is in constant contact to see if we're going to still be in business for a while and other than that, no, out of any trouble.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes, I attended the CSAC New Supervisors Institute annual meeting in San Diego at the end of December. That was a great.
Okay, sorry.
That was a good experience. I received an informal presentation about the Wilderness Act and that was very interesting. I met Jeff at the food bank and had a tour and I told him I would be interested in pledging my first $5,000 of pay from the county to go towards the food bank. I was able to like write a letter of support for the Downriver Fire Department to receive a $20,000 grant to complete their kitchen so they can be a service, emergency service center for the area. Last Thursday, I attended a leadership course in Reading, Leadership by Values, Strategies for Success in Public Service. Something I took from that was everyone has two ears and one mouth for a reason. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. What would have been out of county control, I took two phone calls for the State Force Task Force Committee. Then we haven't met. I've been elected, not elected, appointed Chair of the CSAC Government Finance Committee. I was Vice Chair before and they appointed me as Chair. Other than that, no, out of town. All right. Anything else? Probably anybody forgot? No? All right, moving on to the California State Cannabis Legislation. As we know, any moment, they should be finalizing their regs, any moment. I don't have a date, but it's, could be today, who knows? That's really the latest update. Supervisor Finley?
Nothing to report, just the SB 51 is interesting.
Okay. We'll have to connect on that, I'm not that familiar at the moment. Permit Commercial Cannabis Ordinance. Supervisor grows?
Yeah. I will note that everybody that felt that they're excluded from the public parts process has left and everybody that usually understands what's going on is here to hear the report. So we, we have received back from the Planning Commission their changes and that will be coming to the board soon. We will, and this is on the amendments to the cannabis, we will be sending information and requests from ADHOC down to get retail from the Planning Commission and that should be soon. At this time, I wanted to take a little time to, there's a lot of misconception out there on what the ADHOC is and what we do. So the ADHOC at this point is Judy, Keith, Rick, Richard, Leslie and legal counsel of some sort that we meet usually on a weekly basis. What we don't do is micromanage the department over there in planning. I haven't been over there in probably a year and a half. We don't hire, we don't fire, we don't direct staff to do, staff on the ground to do anything. That's all up to our paid employees, which is our CAO and Rick. Also, there's confusion over the role of SEQA and SEQA, of course, is an important part of this process, but the ADHOC is not involved in SEQA because as supervisors, we cannot see the document, be involved in the document, have our hands on the document until the document comes to the board. We actually will see it after, or the public will see it. And for example, the last MND that was done, we still never received a report on that. So SEQA issues are not in the ADHOC's wheelhouse and all we can tell and say is that we have directed staff to have SEQA completed by the July 1st date. Let's see, whatever else do I have on my note? We do take public comments and we, this last week, we talked to four different individuals that came in that had concerns. I will say again, the people that claim that they have no access are the people that refuse to come in and talk. So with that, I don't think I have anything else. Do you need to give anything?
No, I'm just further add, board members, you have thoughts, ideas on the amendments? You can't unfortunately talk to us directly through the Brown Act, but I would certainly encourage you to run them through the CAO or Margaret as we have requested in the past. Of course, full dialogue will happen when amendments or whatever comes before the board, so since we have a new member of the board, I just wanted to make sure you understood that process from your point of view.
Thank you. I do have one other thing that I skipped over. A lot is talked about where the money goes. These are public records for people and I will say that when we passed our budget, we allowed three days of public comment and one public person was here and there was no comment for those three days. But it is a public record, we can, you know, I had staff pull it yesterday, we budgeted $2,460,000 for income and at this point, we've received $450,000, and this is an example. We paid the Sheriff's Department $220,000 for code enforcement and the list goes on and on and on what's gone on, so when you hear that this is all done in secret, it's secret because you don't bother to look up what is being done. Enough of my chest, I think, people that don't deserve it.
Okay, jail detention, ADHOC, Rick?
I got a piece of good news that was expected, but just another thing about the jail that's done. We did get FAA clearance this morning, so we were expecting it, but it's final and now I don't have to worry about that cloud kind of hanging over the jail a little bit there. It's, I was actually at my desk wrapping up the RFP to put down on the street for the consultant contract, the person that will be overseeing the jail, that's going out hopefully by the end of the week or beginning of next week. And I am also working on the final details of the jail contract for construction itself. As a matter of fact, the plans will be up on CIP list later on today, but the official NOC and all that won't be out till probably midweek, probably next week. We're still shooting for February 28th in that timeframe, bid opening. Shortly thereafter, depending on how that goes, then we'll follow up with a bid to build a short section of road from the juvenile center up to the jail, that'll be one of the construction pieces. And then also a water line we'd like to build later on this summer, which will give us the water capacity that we need for the jail and to be talked about. the water capacity that we need for the jail until we talk about it further. So, that's kind of the timeline of how projects will fall into place over the next couple of months.
Okay. Questions? All right. Thank you, Rick. Wilderness Oversight.
I stepped off last minute.
Nothing to report.
Oh, you?
And if Keith stepped off, then I would make a motion to dissolve the Wilderness Oversight Committee.
No stand motion?
Yes.
One second. Yeah, typically, we don't need to do that, but given last week, and Supervisor Grove stepped off, and you, of course, don't want to...
Correct.
...participate or move forward with it, we can just take it off the roster. Supervisor?
I'd be happy to be involved in any way possible in the study of the pros and cons of the Wilderness Act.
Okay.
If that's helpful.
Thank you. Supervisor Finley, would you like to continue as this ad hoc to keep the Board abreast on this matter, or Supervisor Grove? Thank you.
I'll let Keith go first. He has a higher interest in this.
I think that this is an extremely important issue, and a role that supervisors should take is to be in the big picture of what goes on and have, say, on all sides, what people in Trinity feel like, and Trinity should try to get the best deal possible out of this. But it seemed that there was a disagreement on the roles of supervisors, so I stepped off for that. I would always be interested, and I will represent my district in this.
Then please let me step aside, and it's up to you.
Okay. Supervisor Brown, if you want to serve as an ad hoc to this, either, I don't think Supervisor Finley is interested. Supervisor Grove?
We do have this agendized.
Is it on the...
Well, not all our committees.
Yeah, this is a little oddball one. I mean, I'll be there.
So, it could be saved at that point.
So, we can do that.
You have a motion.
Okay. Supervisor Chabot's willing to withdraw or allow me to amend?
I'd be happy to resent my...
Okay. If, I will still keep a motion on the table, change my motion, to removing Finley from the ad hoc committee and Supervisors Brown and Grove, put them on the Wilderness Ad Hoc Committee. Wilderness Oversight.
One second, though. Where's Margaret?
I will, all in favor, and I don't think we need to do this process, but all in favor?
Aye.
For voting, would there be a public process to this?
Right. So, again, this is the ad hoc committee. It's up to the Chair to write the appointments to it. I don't think you need a motion to do it, so if you want to withdraw the motion, I think that's more appropriate. Yep.
Okay. I will throw the motion pending.
Okay. So, I hear, this is the, I will appoint Supervisor Brown, and Supervisor Grove, if he's still interested in keeping the Board updated on this issue.
Yes, I will, still.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Supervisor Finley.
You bet.
Supervisor Chabot, please. Okay. Now, plenty of matters. These items include nonroutine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the Board's staff has probably been requested an item be heard out of order. What I'm going to do is move 5.1 toward the end, so we can get staff who's waiting, and they can get their items taken care of. Anybody else has requests? Okay, see, none, only move up to 5.2 under Human Resources. Take the following actions to address the minimum wage increase effective January 1st, 2019. Authorize Human Resources to provide adjustment to the hourly rate for the current employees and any newly hired employees with the following classifications to make their wage compliant with the minimum wage of 2019. Nonexempt classifications: Administrative Clerk 1, G137; Administrative Clerk 1, Nonrepresented, N137; Account Clerk 1, G140; Account Clerk 1, Nonrepresented, N140; Custodian, G140; Gate Attendant, G140; Jail Club, G140; Library Assistant, 1, G137; Occasional Training, G138. Under exempt classifications: Administrative Service Officers, M193; Facilities Operations Superintendent, M205; Mental Health Service Act Coordinator, 1, M203; Solid Waste Technician, 2, M179; Solid Waste Technician, 3, M189; Solid Waste Analyst, M203; Supervising Accounting Technician, M209. And we also will need to do, part of this item is number two, change the salary range from M183 to 213 for the Food Services Manager/Corrections. Approximately increase for current employees is $2,500 per month, $112 for general unit to non-general fund employees, $2136 for management unit and general fund employees, and $252 for management unit, non-general fund employees. Shelley?
I'm sorry for such brief agenda items. So, effective January 1st, the California minimum wage increased to $12 an hour. An additional item to this is exempt employees who are currently two times the minimum wage. So, as you can see, we have nine nonexempt classifications that are affected and seven exempt classifications. Under the nonexempt classifications, currently, we have three employees who would be impacted by that, and under the exempt, we have four. So, the first item, what we're recommending do is not actually change their salary range as of right now, and I'm asking that you authorize us providing them an adjustment where, through the time card process, we would pay an additional amount that would be the difference between what the legal requirement is and what their current salary range is. And the same for the exempt classifications that are listed under number one. And then we also would want to offer, if we were to have any new hires, to offer them at that range as well. The Food Services Manager Corrections position, however, that classification has fallen so low below the legal requirement, we were recommending to actually change their salary range, as you mentioned in item 183, to M213. This is a temporary fix for this issue. We are in current negotiations with all five bargaining units. We are addressing this minimum wage increase as well as future minimum wage increases for the next few years, implementation of our classing compensation study, and addressing any compaction issues within a series of classifications and management that all of these changes could cause. So, we are addressing, you know, as I said, this is a temporary fix to meet legal requirements. I have met with the union, and each of the representatives from all bargaining units, everybody was in support of this recommendation. We thought long and hard about it, the best way to do it.
Questions from the Board? Questions, comments from the public? All right. See you, none?
Motion to approve 5.2, Items 1 and 2 as presented.
Thank you. One second. I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Yes, see you, none. Item passes. Thank you, Shelley. Thank you. Okay. Shelley, I think you have the next one. No. Oh, sorry. Well, yeah. You don't have to leave. Five, item 5.3, increase the allocation for the Treasury Tax Collector Department from 3 to 4 Account Clerk 1 or 2, or Accounting Technician 1 or 2, or Accounting Technician Senior, minimum of 1, or accountant 1, 2, or 3, minimum of 1. Effective January 15, 2019, and direct that set changes are made to the allocation of positions listing. Approximate costs and salary and benefits per month for the Accounting Tech 1 at A-Step is $4,646, and for Accounting Tech 2 at A-Step is $5,051.
There's also a typo, transition from minimum amount to be a maximum amount?
So, you want us to replace the max where minimums are? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Under the requested actions that we're speaking of? Where it says it there?
No. I'm sorry. Those are actually, are you looking under the requested action? Where it says minimum of 1 in parentheses? Yes, so, under the, yeah, so, the department is requesting an Account Tech 1 or Account Tech 2. In the flexibly staffed series of these positions, the accountant, there could only be a maximum of 1. Oh, I see what you're saying. Thank you for catching me. Okay, so, this...
You can brief the Board, Shelley, on this.
Okay. So, the department has been working at very tight staff levels for several years. They came to me asking if they could increase an allocation, so I prepared the document after discussing it with the Treasury Tax Collector. The funding mechanism, there is a separate agenda item for that. So, one of the greatest impacts from these very small departments that we have is you're able to satisfy the basic requirements. When you try to do additional services, when you're fully staffed, you might be able to do that, possibly. When there are employees that need to take vacations or have extended leave, things of that, that can seriously impact the ability of the small staff department to function. So, that is really the greatest request for this item. It is for the remaining part of this fiscal year, and Terry is here if you had additional questions outside of myself, she'd be happy to answer as well.
Board members, questions of Shelley or Terry? Minimums allocation item?
Yes, just to clear up the minimum question, you're looking at 4 accountant 3, 1, 2, or 3 with a minimum of 1 of those, correct?
A maximum of 1.
You only want 1 in the allocation for that accountant, 1, 2, or 3? So, we wouldn't hire 2 1s or 2 2s?
Oh, Accounting Technician Senior and an Accountant. Those are the 2 where you can only have a maximum of 1.
So, both of them should be maximum?
Correct.
Okay. That's where I was confused. I didn't understand minimum of 1 and maximum of the other.
So, they currently have 3.
Okay. And this is just for allocation of the...
Classification.
Classification.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Their total allocation is 4?
Is 4, correct. 3 within this series of positions.
Go ahead, one question. If this passes today, how soon is there an anticipation of being staffed?
Recruitments can take 2 to 3 weeks, and then you take another week and a half to set up for interviews, so it's really another month out before you guys have somebody in there.
Okay. Any members of the public on this allocation item? Terry? Did you want to add anything to this, Sheriff Department?
I can definitely add if you like.
I don't know that we had specific questions. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything.
I think that just we can do a lot more if we are staffed properly.
All right. No more comments? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item 5.3, and with the word "changing" of minimum under requested action, and 2 places to read as maximum.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay.
Weren't we going to look at this at mid-year and make a decision at that time?
Yes, sir. Part of the Budget Committee was to review this at mid-year, and actually, 5.4 addresses the funding of this position, so, but it was filed on mid-year reviewing, because the request was made in initial budget and denied for the position, but we did say yes, we would review it at mid-year, and we have better account of our revenues.
So, clarity for everybody that, yes, though, here, allocate something, and that you have to do the next 1, 2, to actually build a position.
Yes, this would just allocate a position, but not fund a position. 5.4, we just...
Okay. A motion, a second, and the other for the discussion. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. I don't care. Thank you. Thank you. Meaning, item 5.4.
For the budget adjustment for fiscal year 2018, 2019, and the Treasury Tax Collector Department, $1,350, increasing salaries and benefits by $25,539, and approve a budget adjustment for 2018, 2019, in the contingency General Fund Department, 9901, and decreasing appropriations for contingency by $25,539. Increase in general fund appropriation in the amount of $25,539.
Okay. Thank you, Moore. This is obviously the budget side of the item.
So, basically, this item is something that will be a benefit to, you know, the public, the other departments, and, you know, to our team as a whole. But what we've here, this is just one example of the things that we do that benefit the General Fund as a whole. And I feel that there are many areas that we are either losing revenue or that we can't collect if we are fully staffed, and so those are some of the things. And I tried to include in the staff report that one of the deposits that was made for this particular fiscal year for General Fund, and that's what we're hoping. We do have extenuating circumstances this year, that's the reason we're coming to you sooner than mid-year budgets, the fact that our, and then also that there was additional unanticipated unbudgeted revenue. So, I would be there.
The unanticipated revenue, is that in or out?
It's already, I came to you last board meeting.
Questions to the CAO? I mean, it looked like it isn't to say, so...
Yeah, I'm always in favor of reducing, increasing our workload, reducing the stress on staff, so I'm not opposed to the position at all. My concern is the ongoing funding of the position, because we're using discretionary funds that came in, and I guarantee next year, so that's my only concern. We have a lot of expenses coming up at the jail, and also increased staffing in the jail. So, I would just like some assurance that we have an ongoing process in which we'll be able to sustain this position.
So, you're going to tell them to do it? I'll do it for you. So, are you in a position that you would think that we could move forward this year, but then possibly there wouldn't be money for funding next year, and there wouldn't be a layoff or furlough until it was money? Is that right?
That's my concern, because we don't have a good trajectory. And I asked Terry about the trajectory of this funding, what comes in. It's hard to predict. I don't have a history of it. I was able to include a history of what we've collected over the years, because it seems that that's what we'd be relying on for this position. What's it called, unfunded? Okay. Discretionary.
And Terry, remind me, this funding that you're referring to is really your tax sale revenue that's come in. revenue that's come in, unplanned access proceeds, and I'm not looking for this to specifically to fund that, because that is, that is not a guarantee, so I'm looking that if I have the additional staff, then I can do the work, we can meet the need, and that's something that I'm looking at, so I'm not looking for this funding to, because that goes up and down, but it is consistent that we do have something that goes to the general fund every year, but that I'm not looking just specifically for that funding to fund this position.
Since you would take a commitment from the budget committee to build this position, is valuable to retain year after year.
Can the, can staff come back and give us that information if this was tabled for a couple of weeks?
Susie's in the audience, when do we get the numbers for mid-year?
This is not because business manager, it's a bit, because, the, we hope to do mid-year budget review on the February twentieth board meeting. We are waiting on the auditor's office to complete the cost plan, to get those revenue numbers in, and my understanding, when talking with the auditor, is that we hope to have those by the end of this month.
Thank you, and Terry, not to dissuade you, I understand you, this person could help pay for themselves and bring in additional revenue from your tax collection, so, I understand it's vital.
Supervisors.
I did want to point out that your budget committee is not an act, there is no existing budget committee, so.
Correct.
You and staff.
It would be, yeah, it would be staffed, it would.
Just want to make that clear.
Because you are the ultimate budget officer.
I am now the ultimate budget officer, yes.
According to code.
We're the ground well.
Okay, any other questions?
Just make a comment, I think it's important, I know that there's been people from Van Dusen and Haford in quite a bit of ways, and, under the recent circumstances, they've driven all the way here, some of them have had to take the day off, so, you know, to come in, they can't get here before lunch and back, and then to have it closed, and I know that the marshals have had to deal with the brunt of that, so, I think that this is very important, that we staff it, and if we have to look at it in a year to see whether it's paying its way, I still, I don't see the benefit in putting it off, especially with the incoming of the taxes due now, so.
We have some needs now that are going to impact what revenue, if this isn't funded, then we'll have issues with what we can do for this year.
Supervisor Chadwick raised a good question, sort of, with this additional position, will you extend your hours?
Absolutely.
So what will those be then?
We would be nine to four.
Nine to four, and they currently are nine to?
One.
One, okay, so this will add to extended normal hours. Okay, board members? Sorry, thank you, public member? Nope, see, none, back to the board. I'd be happy to move this item forward, or make a motion to this item, as presented. Okay, do I hear a second?
I second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, hearing none, so moved. Thank you. I think, oh, we are not done, we have to go back up to. Effect to five point one, appoint supervisors to represent the county on various boards, commissions, committees, and task force, no fiscal impact. Okay, so, let me, luckily, item. So, newly minted Supervisor Brown, we have additional work for you. So, just to give a little background to the public and to our new board member, obviously, we sit on a variety of different committees throughout the year, representing the county, along with our normal board meetings, so, what I think we'll do is just go right down the item, I think some of you certainly want to remain on certain committees, if you don't, obviously you'll make that mention. So, on the airport advisory committee, we have Supervisor Groves.
I would love to stay, the workload's been.
That's right.
Been awesomely heavy since we haven't met in two years, and if Rick's still in the room, he's going to change that this year.
Okay. Moving on to behavioral health advisory board, we have Supervisor Finley. At the moment, it was former Supervisor Mines as the alternate, Supervisor Finley, are you wishing to remain?
Yes, it would be my pleasure.
Thank you. Supervisor Brown, would you like to, unless there's another board member that would like to serve as alternate?
If no one else does, I'd be happy to do that.
All right, thank you. All right, CSAC, we typically appoint this back in the fall, before our convention, so, of course, I would hold in a few leadership positions there, I'd like to remain, and Supervisor Groves, I assume you wanted the alternate?
Then we already appointed.
We did, I'm just reviewing for everybody's sake. Child Abuse Prevention Council, Supervisor Chadwick, if you have any. Okay, anyone else would like to serve as alternate? Supervisor Brown, your former Supervisor Mines was the alternate?
Yes, that sounds good.
Okay, thank you. LPC, Child Care and Development Planning Council, Supervisor Chadwick, I'll continue. Okay. First five, Supervisor Groves.
I would gladly continue, unless somebody else would like that position?
Okay, hearing none, we will keep the course. The Colusa Glen Trinity Community Action Partnership, we had Supervisor Mines and Supervisor Chadwick, I'd like to stand. Okay, Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, which one was that again, I'm sorry?
That would be CAP, otherwise known as Colusa Glen Trinity County Action Partnership.
Yes, that'd be great.
I assume Supervisor Finley, I assume Sandy Bechtel would keep, continue as public member.
I believe so, that we have to, their bylaws.
Yeah, we meet on the twenty-third, Jeremy, and I think I forward you the menu, it's out of county, travel, just in case you were chosen.
Yes, I'm aware of the details.
Okay. And are you aware of Sandra Bechtel wanting to remain as a public member?
Yes, at this time, so.
The Community Correction Partnership, Supervisor Finley.
I'm more than happy to continue, but according to the bylaws, it can be a supervisor or the CAO, and I think that the CAO would make a much better fit for this position. Sorry, you attended yesterday, so.
Yeah, I would agree, so, guess what, CAO can, you've been volunteering.
I shouldn't write that down, Tita.
Disaster Council, this is, we don't have a choice here, of course, it's a great group of folks who service well during emergencies, typically it's the board chair and vice chair, so Supervisor Chadwick, you will be joining me on this committee. The Emergency Food and Shelter Program, EFSP, local FEMA board, again, this is the chair and vice chair, who will serve, I think it's maybe twice a year we meet. The Emergency Medical Service Committee, this again is a chair and vice chair position. The Environmental Service, JPA, ESJPA, RCRC Subcommittee, this is Supervisor Finley, and the alternate, Diane Rader, out of Saladway, Supervisor Finley.
Can we push this off and do it with the RCRC?
We can.
Thank you.
Forest Schools Coalition, this is up and down depending on budget, so I'm happy to serve, we certainly talk about this issue at NACO, and CSAC, Chadwick, or anybody else would like to be an alternate, doesn't really meet that often, so. Which one, I'm sorry? The Forest County Schools Coalition.
And there's no, I just would be concerned that, I can continue, but I'm going to have to look at a couple of these other days, they might, as long as there's an issue.
Sure.
Work it out.
If you can't talk.
Okay, thank you. Golden State Finance Committee.
I'd like to move that to RCRC.
The Trade County Collaborative Group, I'm happy to continue, Supervisor Mines set on that committee, Supervisor Brown, would you like to join me?
Yes, I'd be happy about that.
Okay. Highway thirty-six, District Supervisor, Supervisor Finley.
Finally had their first meeting that I went to after seven, seven and a half years.
Okay.
It was good.
Yeah.
Saved up a lot.
I brought a lot of wine.
Housing Rehab and Business Loan Committee, I don't know that that, if we skip, oh, sorry, Highway two ninety-nine, I'm happy to serve on that, we don't meet that often as well. If I can't, I will probably call one of you whose district runs through two ninety-nine to serve on that as well.
I'd be happy with that.
Okay. Housing Rehab Business Loan, where are we with that? We haven't met, there hasn't been.
We haven't met, yeah, we have the grants person on board now, and we'll probably have to establish a loan committee, so, I'll be working with her a little bit, and see what needs to be done, and I'll be able to sign, and it is still loan committee to review.
Okay.
Sue Dear, New Grants Person, is working on familiarizing herself with all of our current loans, and then will be requesting that we put together a loan committee, and it'll help her reach out to the other committee members, and the two board members who are appointed here, probably won't be for a few months before we pull one together, to give her time to familiarize herself with the loans, and address any issues that the loan committee needs to review.
Currently, Susie, we show one supervisor, would it be wise to add another supervisor? Did I hear you say that?
We probably only need one, we could appoint an alternate if you wanted, in case that supervisor wasn't able to attend, but, they, they're not regular meetings, and they're things that we typically pull together, so we would work around, we would attempt to work around the board member's schedule.
It is, I'm sorry, it is nice though to have an alternate, in case you feel there's a conflict, because it's in your district, we can pull together, help it in.
So let's do that, let's add an alternate, anyone, you should just serve on this?
I can, I'd be delighted.
Supervisor Brown, great, okay, so we'll have you as an alternate. LFCO, Supervisor Chadwick, Supervisor Finley, Supervisor Morris, and Groves is the alternate.
Count me in.
Count me in, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm happy to remain.
Bobby, you want some relief, I can, you can move to alternate, or if you're fine, or I'm fine with being alternate, either, is that's a, a few?
If you want to do, I feel like you're more educated in it, it's been education.
It's totally up to you, I think.
I'll be happy to be the alternate, thank you.
All right, Partnership in Action for Trinity Health, known as PATH, Supervisor Chadwick, you sit on this as the primary?
Yes, I do.
Would you like to continue?
Yes.
Supervisor Finley, you're the alternate?
I'll be more than happy to relinquish. Supervisor Brown is interested?
No, that sounds great.
Okay. NACO, I'm happy to remain, I would like to put an alternate on here, Supervisor Chadwick, I would accept that. Will somebody else would like to be an alternate?
No, one comment regarding that is, we might look at also the western side of western states.
Right, right.
Of having, having that in addition to this with the NACO representative.
Yeah, I'll look at that and.
And joining that association.
Yeah, oh, it's just a sub.
It's a sub, but, but, we have, the president coming up is going to be, I think, Mariposa County.
Kevin?
Kevin, I think, Kevin.
Oh, I think you're right.
Kevin Kent might be on that one, so.
And he and I sit on a couple of plans together.
So it might be, the who was to, in pre-sar.
Right. Okay, North Coast Air Quality Management District.
NorCal EMS.
NorCal EMS. Listen to me, thank you, I'm just, NorCal, I have nowhere to go, so I don't know why I'm rushing. NorCal EMS, Supervisor Chadwick, I assume you'd like to remain as your alternate. Nortech, Supervisor Finley.
So, to you, I have no problem remaining.
Okay, and you have a nice history there, anybody else?
I will be chairing for the next two years.
Oh, you will?
Yeah.
Oh, well then, okay. North Coast Air Quality, I'm happy to continue, I don't know if anyone wants to be alternate, typically it was Supervisor Mines, I would throw that to Supervisor Brown.
It's fine with me.
Anybody else? No, okay. North Coast Resource Partnership, I'm certainly willing to remain, as since I am their chair, Supervisor Finley or Supervisor Brown, I don't know if you have any interest, or anybody else has an interest?
Go for it.
Okay.
I have not heard from our technical review that they wish to not continue, so we're going to go on, and whether they like it or not. North Coast, Northwest California Resource Conservation Development, I'm getting the eyes for it, do something, cancel?
No, I'm just worried about something else.
Yeah. RCND, Supervisor Chadwick?
Yes, standing by.
All right, I can remain your alternate. PSA Two, Supervisor Finley, you've been making that trip.
No problem remaining, again, I'm chair.
Okay, oh, you are, okay, congratulations, and I assume Sandy wants to remain, and I'm happy to remain as your alternate.
Okay, and that would be, Sandy remaining would be her choice, okay, got it.
Unless you care otherwise.
Okay.
Okay. RCRC, Supervisor Finley, you've been the primary, and Supervisor Chadwick is the alternate.
Since I have two years left, and I'm also planning on not running, again, not seeking reelection or this office anymore, I, I don't know if Bobby is or not, but I'd like to see if somebody, nothing against anybody here, but I would like to see Supervisor Brown start the process, it'll take him a year or two to get involved with it, and I think he probably will look at continuing further, so I would like to see him step up or be assigned as primary. Again, it's your choice, either that or I'm more than happy to continue with RCRC. If he's, if somebody's not given two years, I mean, I was, I was shut out for two years, so it took me a while to get up there, so I'd like to have him get a head start with this one, and start meeting everybody. Bobby, it's nothing against, I'm just not sure whether you're going to run again, and I agree with you, whatever.
I'd love this, this is probably my.
Most informative.
Most important one, and I think it'd be awesome if you could be primary, and I would be alternate, and I do go.
Me, or?
No, if Jeremy would accept it, I would, I would be your alternate, and I'd be more than happy to continue, and I do go to all of them even as alternate, because they are that important, so it's your choice.
Yeah, I'd be honored.
Okay.
And, go for it, that brings up the next.
To Golden State.
Golden State, that would be best to go with the same.
Same, duo?
Right.
Okay, so we will appoint Supervisor Brown as primary to the GSFA of RCRC, and the EJ, ESJPA.
Okay, ESJP is a little bit different.
Okay.
The request I have there is, I have more, I'm more than happy to continue with that, I'd make it a point not to go to the meetings, because Ms. Rader.
Does a great job.
Is the alternate, and she is allowed to vote and participate in the actual bills and problem, legislation that comes forward, so, I, I'd like, you guys should be involved in ESJPA, we are part of it, but I really would like Diane Rader to continue in the voting and extreme participation.
She's in.
So I can stay on and just not go, or?
No.
Or go, or you can go and leave to. Or go, or you can go and leave the room every time a vote comes up.
Are you at all suggesting that she become the designee? Or is she not allowed?
I don't...
Has to be a board member? Has to be a board member?
Yeah. We went, we went through this before, and we went through with Mary Piddo.
Okay.
Who is now retired.
So Supervisor Finley, would you like to remain, or would you like to bring in any member from the RCRC?
I'm more than happy to remain, depending on how... That would mean that if either of you go to the meetings, you're not voting or anything.
Right.
But you can still participate.
I think it would be the primary as well, like we've done in the past, the primary on the Golden State and the RCRC, even if he doesn't go.
We're talking ESJP.
Yeah, right.
So we'll just keep Supervisor Finley as ESJPA, Diane Rader as alternate. Moving on to the GSFA, we will put Supervisor Finley on and keep you as alternate.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Let's see, get back to... All right, the RAND Board, Remote Access Network Board meets as needed. Of course, sets a chair and vice chair position. STAC, myself and Supervisor Chadwick, I'm happy to remain. I assume you are. Solid Waste Hearing Panel, Supervisor Chadwick. Are you, want to keep that?
Yes.
If you want to step in, I know you've got a lot of stuff.
Yeah, okay. If you take it, that'd be great. Supervisor Grove? You're actually quite Supervisor Grove. I know you're just coming off of chair.
Retired.
He's retired. Is there anything that...
I picked up a few. I'm trying to, I'm trying to pick up a little weight.
And?
Jeremy's so loud down there, I just...
That's why we keep pushing everything.
Superior California Economic Development District, SCED. Supervisor Chadwick is the primary. The alternate was Supervisor Mines. Did you want to?
This is another really important for county, so I, I will stay as long as it doesn't conflict with the additional ones.
Yeah, okay. And then how about we put Supervisor Brown as the alternate?
Oh, that's kind of me. He'll probably get me off any more.
Supervisor Grove, Trinity County Commission on Aging.
Sure.
The Trinity County Fire Chiefs Association, we have myself and Supervisor Chadwick as alternate. I don't think it hurts, obviously, for both of us to show at the same time. I think someone from that side of the hill, Haight Mark and beyond, gets to hear what's going on as well as this side of the hill, so I'd like to keep it. Okay? Fishing Game Commission, Supervisor Finley.
Whoa, absolutely. Tina, we had a discussion regarding this, correct? And we're not, county council, we're not sure whether a supervisor is even supposed to be assigned.
What a redmond this time is the...
We will go.
Make the appointment from this perspective, and then we'll look at it from the other perspective of whether it involves some minor tweaking.
With the bylaws.
It's not the bylaws, it'd be their bylaws.
Fishing game.
Okay, so we're going to keep you...
If you want.
Unless you want to give up.
It's fine, I've almost gotten out of chairing it.
Okay. TMC, Supervisor Grove, I assume for sure you would be on this.
Yeah, I want to stand up.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Yes, it took too long to get up to speed.
This is one that I would also echo John's. This is, once you're in this, this is kind of a commitment. It does take two years to even figure out the acronyms. And when I figure out how everybody else thinks they're all, let you know. But this is one that needs to be an active... Every other agency's alternate goes all the time, and it takes a lot of time, so...
Well, then I probably can't, because it has been conflicting, and I get the information, but I haven't. So it's been a conflict. But I can read the materials on my own, so I will then step down.
Okay. Supervisor Brown, I know you don't need it.
I can take the last one if you want. It pertains to the river?
Right.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Between our two districts, we have mostly the Trinity County branch.
Full leverage of the water.
Oh, that's...
We better agree on the use of that.
We'll just split it 50-50, no problem.
Okay. I think we've got that accomplished.
Supervisor, your comments in the public.
Thank you.
I'd like to suggest to the board, if we can have a fiscal committee, if we can have a solid waste committee, why can't we have a committee about hunger in our county? The poorest county in the state of California, and that affects each one of the people in your district. And I would request that you add one more committee, the Committee of Hunger in Trinity County.
These committees are typically staffed by other people, so I would have to talk to the CAO of what that would look like. You have to come back to the board in more detail, but I made it this way. Any other comments? Yes, we guess.
Do we, are, is Long the permanent county council? It is. I was under the impression that county council is supposed to be an employer, appointed employee by the board of the county. And I was curious if you guys would start a committee to find an appointed employment as permanent county council? Can we start a committee, a specialized committee to find a permanent, not independent firm, but someone, so we can save money? Because from what I can understand, CSAC, the whole point is to mitigate litigation and avoid costs, right? Not one of the tenants of CSAC. And then if we have an independent firm representing county on county matters, the incentives aren't aligned, because they get paid more with the more litigation that there is against the county, if I'm not mistaken. So like, you wouldn't pay a contractor by the hour to build a house, because it's in their best interest to drag out that construction as long as possible. It doesn't make sense to me for the county to employ an independent firm whose best interest is to continue litigation. Can we discuss that?
Those typical things come out of the CAO's office?
So they decide?
Well, if he's going to make a recommendation to the board, unless the board has some other... And I will tell you, her firm handles a lot of different legal issues for us, not just lawsuits, so...
I was under the impression that state law was that they're supposed to be, the county employee is appointed by the board, and that independent council is only supposed to be for specialized issues. And if they're a permanent council, doesn't that violate state law?
I would ask for a council and CAO.
Is this, is this something you want to look into?
Yeah.
It's not engendized. We are appointed through the government code following all the necessary procedures. It is a procedure that many counties in the state of California do to save money. But beyond that, if you want to engendize, I'm happy to.
So how much has the county paid her firm in the past two years? Is this saved money?
If you'd like to be with me, you know, either after making appointment, I'd be more than happy to go through the budget and then extend.
I was told it was $1.8 million over the past two years, and not some phenomenal legal fees.
Yeah, no, that's incorrect. But I'd be happy to be with you, and I'd go over some of the numbers if you like.
But is it legal for us to have permanent, independent county council? Because I just don't see the incentives aligning. And then with the whole TA lawsuit, and then the CSAC appointment, now it seems like it'd be a good time to have a special committee to find an attorney to bring in-house. Because you could pay what, an attorney significantly less than what you would pay an attorney to go retire a firm, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know the process as well as you guys, but this is just what I was told.
How many times have we been through the process? Since you've been on board, you've gone through several councils, several in-house planning councils.
So can we have a committee to continue that process, to try to find?
That's the committee right there, making recommendations to the board. I'd be more than happy to listen to, you know, your concerns, and if you go through them, I can, and I can give you some clarification and see if it changes or encourages your opinion. So either way, I'd be happy to be with you.
I do want to make one note. They, she is our county council, but not permanent. They do by contract, and those contracts are reviewed at those times, so it's not a...
Thank you, Supervisor.
Permanent in the fact that it can't be changed.
Now, is there like any key KPIs in there? Or is it, like, how does that, how's that framed? Because I'm just concerned with that.
You might, and I have you direct your questions to the CAO. Once, when we're going to be done, very quickly.
Okay.
So, thank you. Okay. Any other comments on committees?
Just a reminder that we have two committees that will be coming back before the board that weren't on the list, that's all. The Trinity County Opioid and the Trinity County Affordable Housing.
Thank you. And I need to pull up something. Okay. Back to the board members. This is, I don't believe any roll call vote, any vote at all?
No, if you want, I'll make one.
I'm just, I think that the committees have been assigned. Thank you, all of you, for your work. Again, all of you contribute a lot, and couldn't do it without all the committees and the work that you sit on, so thank you very much.
And I would like to tell Jeremy, if there's any conflicting, because I'm sure you're going to find some conflicting in this, just let the chair know, and we'll figure out how to get around that.
And you heard that in public.
Yeah, but the chair will fix it.
All right, moving on to closed session, government code section 54954-5, conference with labor negotiators, county designated representatives, David Prentice, Sophie Mayer, and Shelley Nessus, labor organization, deputy sheriff's association, probation, peace officers unit, officers' unit, skilled trades unit, management, confidential unit, and general units. Any comments on this closed session?
Kate Graves, Lucy Lynn, I have a comment kind of in general. When you have David Prentice here representing as county council, is he here by phone?
If he is.
Because he's not here.
He may or may not join us. Sophie Mayer is here.
Okay, because I'm just curious, because we have no way, it says he's on the agenda to be here. We have no way to know if he's actually on. Could that be made clear when you okay the minutes for this meeting? Whether he actually attended? Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, with that, the meeting... Oh, okay. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
We're going closed session?
Yes. Okay, closed session. Direction has been given to staff. See you on February 5th.